Wait.
Give me.
Okay.
Is there now a move?
Yes, yes, they.
What is in the sewer?
That's they did. He's not joking.
I'm serious.
Because that was the place to be. That was the heart of Blue Collar and killing too.
You know, on Friday night.
Guy.
Yeah.
Drinking.
Drinking.
I think as a kid, I thought that was the strangest thing ever.
I'd have a little older in your own room.
Yeah, right. And then Louie talked about the scrap pool all too.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Since at six o'clock, I'll call the Charter Township of Comstock Planning Commission meeting to order. If you would please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or subtractions?
Not tonight.
Okay. Then I would look for a motion.
I move that we approve the agenda.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from September 25th and September 25th Housing Workshop Minutes.
I would like to ask for a change to be written in the minutes, please, and I'd like it to go on the record. Under Old Business on page seven, and it was discussion with Attorney Thaw. That's not quite correct what it says in the minute or in the documents that we have before us. It should say that all communication must go through the township. Attorney Thaw did not state that. He stated that all applications should go through the township and through the zoning admin. He did not say anything to the sort as to what's in the minutes, so I'd like to have that reflected, please.
May I ask what line that is?
It is line 48 and 49, and I did watch the video three times.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Any other adjustments to the minutes? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move.
I make a motion to accept the planning commission minutes meeting held September 25th, 2025.
As amended?
As amended, yes.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is citizen comments. A citizen may state their name and address and may speak only one time for no more than three minutes. This time may be, may not be given to any other citizen to extend their time. The person speaking has the floor and no other citizen shall speak during someone else's time. During this time, you will be making statements to the board without discussion from the board members. But you are welcome to make appointments with planning and zoning staff to discuss your comments further. Please keep your comments clean and respectful.
Can you phone it in?
ET, phone home.
I guess I would entertain a motion to close the citizen comment or just close it.
Just close it.
Yep. Next item on the agenda is new business. 6454 East ML rezoning request. Casey, you want to explain?
Yes, I can take that away for you. We have a rezoning request application in front of us from Emily Parfett located 6454 East ML. Subject site is, request is currently R1A with a request to go to AGR Agricultural Residential. The lot is about 54 acres in size. I will go through the staff report Kyle prepared, and there are four standards that we shall consider. The first one being if the land, rezoning is consistent with the policies in the master land use plan. The master land use plan has this portion of East ML designated as agricultural, as we have seen with about two or three past rezones. So yes, it is consistent with the master land use plan. Kyle further went on to look, do look at the soils from the USDA Web Soil Survey, which also designates this parcel or the soil at this parcel as prime farmland. He then has a table going over the soils and other items like that. Item number two is whether all the uses allowed under the repurposed, purpo, purpo, sorry, proposed rezoning would be compatible with other zones and uses in the surrounding area. There are multiple parcels within a half mile radius that are currently being used for farming. Other parcels, while they are residential, support natural feature preservation. So while the request is to go to AGR, this is not the only parcel that would be used for farming, which the applicant has prepared a narrative, we will go over in a second. Item number three is if the facilities will be adversely impacted by the proposed rezoning. Any special land use for the AGR zoning district would require a site plan review and more extensive, basically staff review and commission review, but currently known, we do not expect the public services or facilities to be heavily impacted by this rezoning. The last item, number four, is whether the uses allowed under the proposed rezoning would be equally suited to the current zoning of the land. While the AGR district does allow for more intensive special land uses like airports, wineries, hospitals, campgrounds, and landfills, it's important to keep in mind that this parcel is 54 acres in size. So we do want to keep that in mind as well, although the applicant has an idea or a business plan as to what they want to do in the future, any of these land uses could come to fruition. But overall, it is anticipated that the permitted uses allowed under the AGR district would be equally suited to the area. Again, this is noting back to the farming and the heavy nature area that this is already in. I'll just summarize the few talking points. It is compatible with the 2030 master plan as this is expected to become ag or hopefully be ag down the line. AGR district is compatible with the character of the area. And then lastly, permitted uses under the proposed zoning district appear to be equally suited to the area. Special land uses would be more intensive. However, if we got to that stage, it would require heavy commission and staff review. Further into the packet, we have the R1A uses along with standards, AGR uses and standards, the application from Emily Parfett, and then when I emailed you all, I also passed out the business plan and the applicant is here to speak for any questions as well.
Okay. Ms. Parfett, would you like to speak to this?
I think it's pretty self-explanatory in the business plan. If you guys have any questions, I'd love to answer those. I don't, I mean, I'm hopeful that it's self-explanatory in the business plan, what I'm hoping to do here on the property in which I've owned for quite a few years. So is that okay? Or do you want me to sort of read it?
You don't, you don't need to. I think we've all read it.
Okay, great. Good.
Chair, I would like to abstain as I have a parcel that joins to Ms. Parfett's, so I will not be partaking in any voting or discussion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Not I.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Parfett?
No, I don't have a question, but I do have a statement. This is really well laid out.
Oh, thank you.
Anything you ever bring to us is really well laid out.
Thanks.
So I think it's a great plan. I mean, you got a five-year development plan. It's strategic. I think you did a really, really good job of doing this.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Are you, are you creating an organic farm? Is that what that?
I mean, organic's kind of a tough word, right?
Yeah, it is. It is. There's a lot of quality.
Sustainable, environmentally sustainable maybe is a better word.
Okay.
Organic doesn't mean pesticide-free. It just means organic pesticides. So I'm not interested in that piece of the puzzle, but definitely want to grow a lot of, you know, down the road, I'd like to do some more vegan catering and grow all of the vegetables and such there. So it's sort of the goal. Without chemicals, yes.
Okay.
But they last in the soil for a long time. So it's hard to say things are organic when it lasts in the soil for so long.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Some discussion? Joe?
No. Seems very appropriate and acceptable.
Greg?
I also agree with Joe. I drove by the, the piece of property. I thought things are spaced out well. It's a good area for what she's wanting to do.
Well?
No. Just what I said.
Amber?
Yeah, same. I think it's consistent with some of the other rezones we've had in front of us recently where they make sense with the future land map. And I also drove by the property and it seems pretty logical to me.
James?
Same thing as Bob said, very organized, very laid out. I did not drive by the property, but I'm aware, well, where are the property and pull up on GIS map and stuff. I have nothing else at this moment.
Okay.
Can I just make one comment?
Yeah.
Just, and it's just a matter for clarification. Although you have a business plan in front of you, I just want to make sure you understand that this is not a conditional rezone. So she's not held, the applicant is not held to this business plan. It's nice to see it, but it really, when you approve the rezone, it's to any use in the zoning district, not necessarily the business plan.
Yes, under egg.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yep.
Thank you for your comments. We, we do need to focus on that. Often we're presented with what the current owner says they're going to do, and I feel that's a distraction personally.
It is unless it's a conditional rezone because it really, you really need to look at just what are the permitted uses in that zoning district because it could be sold and it could be used, even if they, that owner intended to use it that way. They could sell the property, it's zoned ag, it could then be used for any ag use. But if it's appropriate, you know, in other, in all other capacities, it's fine. It's just, it's fine to look at that plan, but it really doesn't come into play when you're making your decision.
I agree.
We need to.
That's what they taught in class.
Yeah. Override our bylaws if we do anything tonight, correct?
Correct, to waive them, yeah.
I would also, one other comment is, as it's a public hearing, I don't know that we offered other people in the audience the opportunity to speak on it if they wanted to.
I didn't see a public hearing listed.
Public hearing.
Yeah, all rezonings are a public hearing.
Yeah.
We need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we open public hearing.
Support.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we're in public hearing right now.
Just see if anybody from the public wants to make a comment.
Yeah. I guess I'd entertain a motion.
I, I would make a motion to close public hearing.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we're no longer in public hearing. Now, from this point, we have to either vote to bypass our laws or our.
Mr. Chairman.
Move ahead with the bypassing the ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, I, I move that in the absence of public opposition and the clear proposal in front of us, that we bypass our bylaws restrictions and move forward on this tonight.
Support.
Support.
Okay. This one, I think we'll do a roll call, too.
Okay. Kreitzer? Okay. And this is a vote to waive the bylaws.
Yes.
Okay. Lawrence?
Yes.
Sherwood?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Weintraub?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Kreitzer?
Yes.
Bloomfield abstains.
Okay, so now we're going to be voting on this project. Do we have a motion?
I move to recommend support of the rezone request at 6454 East ML to agricultural zoning to the Township Board. I move that we recommend.
Support.
Okay, we're going to roll call this, too.
Okay. Bloomfield abstains. Kreitzer?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Weintraub?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Sherwood?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Motion passes. Sixty As, zero NAs, one abstain. This will go forward to the October 20th Township Board meeting, and it'll, for first reading. Second reading will happen the second Monday of November. I'll send you an email with those dates and times as well. Sometimes I have questions, so it wouldn't hurt. So October 20th, so next, is that next Monday?
Two Mondays.
Two Mondays from October 20th?
Monday's the third.
And then the second Monday of November. But I'll send you an email with that, with the agendas and times and things like that.
So much.
Of course.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is accessory, accessory structure ordinance.
Okay, so I was absent from last meeting, but I did watch it and talk to Kyle about the changes. Sorry for the formatting. We couldn't quite get it to fit in the packet properly, but I know that last meeting you all went bit by bit and discussed. So these are, this is reflecting the discussion that we had. Last meeting, I do, as I was not present, I do have a few questions for clarification. So I will begin with number five B. I believe that the parentheses wording is supposed to be input into our ordinance. However, I'm not sure if that will cause more confusion for the average person reading it, or if the required rear yard is clear enough.
When we discussed it, we had talked about wanting to make that more specific than the quote-unquote required rear yard. So I think that's what this attempt is, although I agree with you that I'm not sure that this is really hitting the nail on the head with that one.
Gotcha. Okay, so I'll talk with Kyle on that. And I'm also curious about five C, the located closer than five feet, which we all agreed upon, but then the additional wording at the bottom as far as adjacent property. I wasn't sure if that was discussed in detail, or if we would like to keep that or change that, or if that is more confusing, or how we all feel about that one as well.
I do have a little bit of a problem with, with it. If you're in a very small neighborhood and you put a huge building in there next to somebody's house, it really makes their, their yard and everything else look really small.
Is regarding the setbacks of five feet?
I, well, five feet works for smaller buildings. But I think, you know, when we move into different types of, or districts, zoning districts, we should look at maybe what that does to them.
So larger structures, maybe a greater setback than five feet? Do we need a trigger like when you hit thousand?
Bigger, bigger in what way? Height, is it the height or the?
Well.
The, the frontage? Do you know what, or both?
Probably, probably a little of both.
Okay.
But I don't know. What do you guys think?
Just to answer your question, as I read it, it's kind of in line with what we discussed. But I, I guess we weren't finished with it.
Okay.
But to answer your question, yes, this sort of captures what.
Perfect.
I vaguely remember us.
Beautiful.
Coming, discussing.
It can be. I don't, I just had that question. If, like, over here on some, you know, on Comstock Avenue, some of those houses, yeah, some of those houses are really, their lots are so small and, but they're, right now, they're allowed 840 square feet, so the lots are small. So if you go to 1440 and they've already got an 840-foot garage, they're only going to be able to put up 600 more square feet on their property. So the building will still be in, in perspective to the size of the lot because they can't build that great big building on that little, on that size lot. That's how I read it. Okay.
Permission to speak?
Yeah.
I feel like we might not have touched on a lot of the zones. And one of the things that I had thought about was if we, we don't want to get ourselves in a situation, and I know this may be a little far-fetched, but I know some people would do it, is we're giving them more space without including their garage. Maybe I'm not thinking about this right, but I'm going to keep going. So if they remove their garage from their house.
No, what we actually did was we.
We gave them a credit.
Yeah, we gave, we took the credit off.
Hypothetically, let me finish. Hypothetically, if they decide they want to remove their garage from their house and make that a pass-through to their backyard so they can build a bigger garage, have we had anything in this ordinance to prevent that? Because it'll change the whole look of the landscape of a neighborhood or a house or a lot.
No.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, I understand.
I mean, there's not.
Kind of cheated a little bit.
Well, they're gonna cheat.
Yeah.
Possibly.
Possibly, yeah.
I'm just saying, you know, if you, if you take something that's in an R1C, I know it's a small lot, we don't have a lot of setback, but you're giving them one, that was probably a bad example, but I'll finish. You'll know where I'm going with it. If you take the R1C and whoever is purchasing the house says, I don't want the garage, and later on, they want to put a larger garage in the back because they have more space by the size of the lot.
But they're still limited to.
Correct. But I said that was an example, but pick a bigger parcel, because like I said, that was a bad example. But do you see where I'm going with it? Where?
But I think we have the square foot built in regard. I think we have the square foot built in there regardless if they have a garage or not. We're just giving them a bonus amount of square feet. If they tear it down, that doesn't mean they can build something bigger.
Well, I kind of know how people think.
Right, yeah, yeah.
So I'm just throwing it out there, so saying, do we have something that's going to prevent that in this ordinance? And is it something that we've thought about in each one of these zones as you go bigger?
I think the setbacks are what the setbacks are, and they're legal, whatever, then the square footage is what it is. So, I mean, if someone is allowed 1440 square feet and they tear down a 400-square-foot garage that's attached to their house, they can still build that 1440 square feet, but they still have to abide by the setbacks. So it's, you know, it's going to change the structure of the front of their house because their garage is gone, but yet it still meets the criteria for the rear of the house with the setbacks.
And at that point, they've eliminated the possibility of having a garage.
Up front again, yeah, for sure. But I know what you're saying and what you're.
I was just thinking down the road, Bob, for.
Yeah.
For some of these zones that we really haven't, I don't know if we've worked through them all the way, for the possibilities of what could happen. That's, that's why I was bringing it up, so.
Oh, you know, I think with the addition of 600 feet on each one of these, the way they're, they're laid out is, I think it's appropriate.
Yeah.
And they're, they're still limited because of the size of the lot that they have, what they can have total square feet on that property, whether it be two buildings that total that or a garage in a smaller building, or tear the garage down and put a bigger building. They're still within the parameters of that ordinance.
We require, too, that it be 25, or it be 25% of the back greens, or green space in the back.
Yeah, they can't go more than.
So.
Right, on small lots, percent of coverage should, should help.
Should cover, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, I think, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
But I understand completely what you're saying. I know what you're saying because probably something I'd done early on in my life.
We want more discussion? Amber?
I'm comfortable with it.
Bob?
So we're talking five-foot, 10-foot setbacks, right? Taking the peak height to 25 feet. I wasn't here for your last meeting, so I'm just.
Yeah.
Playing a little catch-up, too, and I read some, so. But yeah, I'm, from what I've read and what we've talked, yes, I am, I am good with it.
Greg?
I'm also good with it.
Joe?
Yes.
Patrick. Or James, I'm sorry.
Say, who's Patrick?
Yes, I'm good with it.
Yeah, fine. Thank you.
Okay, I am, too.
Sorry.
So.
So we're satisfied with accessory structures?
I think everyone's happy with what, what was done.
All right. I do have, sorry, I have one last thing I want to comment on. I saw that we changed in agriculturally used buildings on lots of five acres or less. The or less was striked, or was it on lots of five acres or less was striked, I believe. So I don't know, because usually if it's a five-acre ag parcel, they do not have to, we have an act, like they don't have to abide, or a six-acre parcel on ag, we don't have, they don't have to abide by this table, but it seems like now we're going to make ag parcels, no matter what the size, they have to follow this table.
No, no, no. The or less should not have been struck.
Okay, gotcha.
Kyle and I talked about that. I don't know how that got struck, that.
Perfect.
Yeah, it, it has to be included.
Okay.
For it to work correctly. On agricultural property, that doesn't apply really at all.
Perfect. Okay, I think everything looks good. One last moment, I, so for six, structures utilized for agricultural purposes, I'm thinking of add, or I was, like, to your feedback, if we put ag purposes on ag land, or if it's residential and it's used for ag purposes, is that okay?
Where were you with it?
Um, number six.
Right here, so it's not it. Thirty, page thirty.
Yes, page thirty to 31.
Over here.
Because we have a, yeah.
Goes up here.
Oh, yeah, I have a question.
Because on number two, sorry jumping around. Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I was going to say, I think our intent, and clarify if I'm, if I'm wrong, but I think the intent was on ag land.
Okay.
Like, not on residential property where we're saying, hey, I'm using this, though, for ag purposes. Residentially zoned is still subject to.
Gotcha.
All of the.
Standards?
Yes.
Beautiful. Those are only two questions.
Thanks, Amber. Anything else, Casey?
Nope. If we're all set with this, we will get this to public hearing. We're looking, probably want to get that to December, maybe November 13th. I don't know if we can also wrap chicken ordinance and bundle it in there as well, but this will be going to public hearing with the Township Board eventually, or public hearing, Township Board approval, that sort of thing as well.
Okay, the next item, item on the agenda is the chicken ordinance. You have. You have
Two tables? Yes, so per the discussion at the minutes, it looks like Commissioner Weintraub suggested half acres with an increase of two additional hens per half acre. Commissioner Lawrence, I think, discussed per one acre increments and then allotment. So I wasn't sure which table you guys thought would look better, per half acre versus one acre, or how are we going to choose?
Okay, yeah, Amber and I agree, I think that we definitely did like the smaller table, the second table that goes in acre increments. I want to change the numbers on everything but the first line. And I would propose that one to, one to one point nine nine is ten, not eight. And then it goes in increments of four after that. Two acres is fourteen, three acres is eighteen, four acres is twenty-two, five acres is twenty-six, and there is no line for six acres. Six acres or more is, they're still limited by that twenty-six, that would be the maximum.
Okay, so say five acres or more.
Yeah, instead of five to five point nine.
Yeah, yeah, five acres or more.
Five acres or more would be twenty-six.
Yes, thank you.
Um, any discussion on this? Greg?
So Amber, you're the chicken expert. I mean, how many is twenty-six chickens? Is it a lot?
Well, if you want me to be totally candid, chicken math is real and you very easily can end up with twenty-six chickens.
That's why I'm asking, I can see it.
It's not, I don't think that, I mean, I think on five acres, twenty-six chickens is not a problem. Like you're still talking about a fairly small coop run space. Yeah, I think twenty-six hens on an acre would be a lot.
Okay.
But I think it's relative to the size for sure.
I mean, twenty-six hens, would that be like a twelve by twelve coop with a bigger run area?
Yeah, or less. I'm, I got a math.
I have a question for you, do, how do you contain them? Because I know we have lots of complaints and the ordinance officers are constantly going out because the chickens are all over the neighborhood. How, how do we contain those?
Well, the ordinance reads that they have to be fenced up to four feet high. Chickens can and may exceed that, you know, may jump that fence.
I'm not sure four feet's enough, is what I'm really
Well, I think you run into, I mean, so
You're going to want more than four feet and that's up to the individual. You're probably going to want a net on top of it too, so that the
If you're talking about their specific run, then yes, generally it's, it's going to be a full enclosed run that they're going to be in.
Correct.
Now, people may choose to free range beyond that on their property, and that's where, you know.
They're going to have a hard time keeping twenty-six chickens alive if they do that because of predators, which isn't any of our business, but, so.
Right.
Yeah, I have no problem with the numbers, I just was curious about information.
And for the, for the coop size, you'd probably be looking at somewhere like nine feet by nine feet-ish, like you're
And they would roost on, and they would roost on shelves and
Yeah, you put roosts in, they want to get up, you generally will have your laying, you know, your nests in there for them to lay, but you don't need, it's not like you need twenty-six nests for twenty-six hens, they'll share space. And if you let them out, they will find other random places to lay their eggs as well.
Okay.
Are, are coops considered accessory structures?
Yes, they are.
That's what we did with them.
Okay, I wasn't hearing, and I was like, well, that, you know, that changes the square footage of some garages too.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that was just my question, so. I looked at my property tonight because I got just under two acres and I go, you know what? Ten chickens would be more than enough on
Twenty-six chickens is a lot, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's relative because their egg, their egg production changes as they age and so you potentially have hens that are not laying anymore, things like that. But when you're talking about the difference of twenty-four versus twenty-six, two hens to me doesn't make much difference.
And that's a maximum, I mean, that's just the maximum, not everybody's going to go for the maximum.
Looks like a lot of work to me.
I guarantee you it is.
Jane, go ahead, Joe.
In addition to the math, there's a couple of other things I wanted to discuss on here, although again, we captured most of what we talked about. In, on the second page, that item B, where we changed the, I guess, yeah, it's still item B. Chicken coops and pens shall be regulated as accessory structures and shall comply with all applicable standards. We had discussed a possible minimum square footage. And I, I don't know if there's support for that, but I think we should, you know, that's, that's one way to control the number of chickens so that somebody doesn't have a tiny little coop or tries to keep them in their garage or something like that and wants to have twenty-six chickens. And that's just a possibility. And then on the other, under item one, where it talks about a fence and enclosure and a minimum height of four feet, I noticed on the swimming pool ordinance, it adds a sentence, no fence shall, shall be included in the front yard. And I don't know if maybe we want to say that if there's a fence for the chicken run, that it not be run into the front yard. Again, that's just a suggestion, but maybe we want to add that sentence here.
That's a good idea, Joe.
Comments?
I think he brings up a good, a good idea, maybe a little more discussion on that.
I don't think we, yeah, go ahead, Amber.
Well, our, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Bub?
Our, our fence ordinance is four feet from the front corner of the house out to somewhere, so it couldn't be more than four feet if it was in the front yard anyway. So you couldn't put up a six foot high chicken run in there with netting and stuff on it because it's, it's against the fence ordinance, so.
Okay. Joe?
No, it's fine.
James?
I agree with the front yard and there should be, you know, nothing in the front yard, it should be in the rear yard.
Sandy?
I'm good, I just like to make sure that we have protected their neighbors in all ways, shape and form so they're not being imposed upon, because that is the problem that we have with the ordnancying. And that's what makes neighbors fight, so I think that's important that we've looked at everything.
Yeah, I, I just question. It must be that they're not, the people in, in our township are not properly enclosing their chickens because they seem to be running all over everywhere.
It's people choosing to free range them versus keeping them in a run. So you absolutely can keep them in a run and they will stay contained, especially if you have covering over the top, which is highly recommended from a predator standpoint. It's just the choice of opening that run up or not, and that would be
I think we should put in, in our ordinance that they can't free range, free range chickens in subdivisions and stuff like that, because we don't have it in our ordinance.
In our ordinance currently, we have during daylight hours that can roam freely. However, if they're roaming at night, nobody in the township is here to take a phone call.
Yeah.
They're not, they're going to roost at night anyway, they're not going to be out moseying down the street.
If they're roaming at night, they're going
They're going to freeze and die or get eaten.
But free ranging shouldn't be done in a very closed community.
Well, the ordinance specifies that they are to be kept in the yard. That's just up for enforcement, right? And I think you're going to run into the same thing of free ranging. Like I think you're going to have a hard time if somebody puts it in a backyard with a six foot fence, just hypothetically, right? Like somebody goes in the backyard, six foot fence, privacy fence, how do you know?
Well, you don't. And if they don't, if they don't leave their yard, it's fine.
Correct, so if we say, I don't understand the difference in saying no free ranging versus what we have, because either way, it's going to come down to somebody making a complaint and something getting, something getting followed up. So would you want to prevent free ranging if it's in a six foot privacy fence and they can't get out? Do we care?
I don't care about that. It's not that as much as the fact that there, people that have them seem to have them all over the neighborhood.
But I, you wouldn't consider them free ranging if you've already have a privacy fence in your backyard, right?
Free ranging is just anything outside of a coop, essentially, outside of the coop or the run, yeah.
My neighbor has a privacy fence on their whole yard, I'm sure them things are running all around in the backyard.
This, this ordinance requires them to be enclosed inside a fence a minimum of four foot. Even, even when they're let loose, they still have to be on your property and fenced.
Yeah, I understand that and
And, and you, you know, if someone in their subdivision lets their chickens run across their front lawn and stuff, and I don't, I see that happen all the time too, that's illegal. And it, you know, it's strictly enforced, they, they can't be allowed to keep chickens that way. If they don't want to infest them in, their, their permit has to be taken away and shut down. I don't know what else we can do.
Those people probably don't have a permit. Right?
They probably don't.
There's probably should be no free ranging in the front yard.
So if, I mean
Yeah, well, which, I think they need to stay in the fenced area.
Yeah, I mean, there should be no, no, no free ranging in the front yard. And front yard fence can only be four feet and it can only come out so, so quote to the road, so.
They can free range on your property if they're fenced.
I guess we've covered it.
Yeah.
I guess my concern with specifying no free range is that this is addressing properties that have five acres in some cases, because this is addressing residential properties and ag zone properties of five, five acres or less. And so depending on where someone places their coop, depending, there's so many factors that where that goes that we would be limiting people that could safely and without impact to others free range. Certainly there are cases on those lower, small lots that it's going to impact others. So that's my concern with the blanket statement of no free ranging, that's all.
Okay.
But I agree with you.
Well, I'm, I'm just thinking, nobody's going to fence five acres. I mean, if they're getting into chickens, usually it's to save money or to create something else, so.
But the chickens don't have to free range five acres.
No. No. Is it?
Yeah.
They have, you know,
Okay.
A thousand square feet.
Need as a pin.
They're free range.
Think we beat it up.
Yeah, I do, I do, one last discussion.
I like the way it's written.
Commissioner Weintraub mentioned minimum square footage, you want to pursue that discussion or?
The what?
The minimum square footage for coop.
I think we've talked about, so like it's recommended that it should be like three square feet per chicken is what's recommended for appropriate housing size. So do you want to specify that they're following that or not was where we were?
Right, I had proposed that, a minimum of three square feet based on, two to four is what's recommended. So that'd be a minimum.
Okay, square foot.
So if you had twenty-six chickens, you have seventy-eight square feet?
Which may also limit how many chickens you have depending on the accessory structure size you could have.
Yeah, correct.
Ted, I'm, I'm good with that.
I, I have a couple of items really quick when we're done with that part.
Go ahead, Amber.
So one is just a simple grammatical correction. Letter B, where we've added the, in the red text, it says agricultural zone property of five acres of less, it just should be or. And then I know we had had some discussion, letter C on page thirty-seven, two C, we'd had some discussion of, of material. I don't have a hard opinion on this, but just thought I would bring it back up because we had talked about, do we, you know, if somebody uses pallet wood, for example, to build a coop, is that something we want to prohibit? I don't know, right? So just the way it's, we left that in there as, as was, but I know we did have some discussion at one time about what materials they could use. You could sell me either way, especially if it has to be in the back of their home. I don't know if we should limit building materials that are accessible.
I, my opinion, I think it's wrote pretty good in there to not use junk. It must adhere to the standards of an accessory building, isn't that the way it reads?
Right, that's what I was saying, is why couldn't you use pallet wood to build a coop?
Oh, well, I guess as long as you rip the pallet apart and it adheres and it looks decent.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, pallet wood or, you know, an attractive use of salvage material would, should be allowed, but certainly stuff like plastic tarps.
Right, yeah.
Because it would become part of a permanent structure.
Yes, it would.
So, I, I mean, I, I appreciate the spirit, but I also appreciate being allowed to use accessible and recycled materials. I think that's completely appropriate. You don't want to allow an eyesore, I, you know, how, how do you, how do you not only enforce that, but, you know, codify it, I, I don't know, I'm at a loss.
Agreed, and maybe it is just what it is, I just was
We talked about it in that too.
Right. Okay, and then the last question I had is on letter eight, it says, no person, no person shall keep chickens without persecuring a permit from the zoning administrator on a form provided. However, on the front side, we're talking about this should only apply to residential districts and agricultural zone property of five acres or less. So my question is, should this, like, this is just a cleanup and it's whatever everyone feels, but the way this would read to me is that no one, regardless of zone, should have chickens without a permit. Or do we want to say for lots applicable, no one shall have a zone without a permit?
Yeah, it should be tempered, I think. The attorney can tell us, but I, I think you're right.
What do you think, though?
So it needs to be related to these restrictions that we're putting on here. Obviously, it's not covering a farm or something like that, so. You know, I don't know if there's qualifier language on all these other restrictions, whether they apply. Let's see, it's all under B. Is permitted as an accessory use to residential use if all the following are satisfied. So I think, so all the other things that are under there than B1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, I think all relate back to
The initial statement.
The initial statement, so I think we're fine.
Okay.
Any other comments? Sandy?
Just on page thirty-eight, Casey will just have to change the numbers since ten is crossed out. It'll just have to move up.
Very good. Is there any reason we can't combine these two in the same public hearing? Or I mean, at least on the same night?
Yeah.
And accomplish them both?
Yeah, so we can. The, I don't think, we had, we didn't have any changes for accessory, did we? No, just to unstrike that one. So there are changes to the chicken ordinance that you all need to see, but you might not see them again until public hearing night. So it's up to you guys, if you want to make the changes, bring them back to November thirteenth meeting and then schedule a public hearing, if you feel confident that I can
You could email them all to us.
Perfect.
Would that work for you guys?
Sure would.
Yes.
So just go ahead, change them and then
Email what, email the final draft.
And we're gonna, we're gonna go with the new chicken math?
Yes, which, which the one acre increments.
One acre permits, bottom chart, but with the different numbers.
Gotcha.
Slightly different numbers.
And then for two A, do we want a clause that says no part of the coop, pen or run shall encroach upon the front yard? Or do we feel like it's fine as is?
I think we're covered.
So no, okay, don't include that encroachment. All right.
Thank you.
Of course, and I will say, the formatting is weird for both accessory structures and our chicken Of course, and I will say, the formatting is weird for both accessory structures and our chicken ordinance. As you can see, everything lines up. That is because we do not have access to the secured file of our ordinance that is outsourced. So for the public hearing, it'll still look like this, but when it gets to our ordinance, it'll be much cleaner.
Okay. All right, I think we're finished with this.
Yes, I got it.
We're gonna...
Miss James?
Yeah, meeting schedules, oh, are we supposed, did we set that?
No, so it's already set to the second and fourth Thursday of each month.
Yeah.
And so this is, you guys need to prove it. There is one item that has changed, because I can catch it pretty early. I do know I'll be on vacation the, what is that, second, second Thursday of February? So I adjusted that so that we could have a meeting back to back instead of the second, so I'm not absent. In case Kyle can't make it either. So I just wanted to see if you guys were okay with that. If not, we can change it back to February 2nd. However, I will not be here for February 12th. However, I might not be here, Kyle may not be able to make it, and so then we'd kind of be toast.
We can forego that one.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Is everybody okay with that?
Would you want, okay, so currently I moved it back to February 19th.
It's not, she didn't put it in.
Correct, so now we have two meetings back to back in February. I could ask one of them completely, but instead I thought we could still have a second meeting and just make up for the one that...
I was confused about this because it said the 25th.
25th?
The year.
Oh, 25, oh, sorry.
Also, the February 27th is a Friday.
Oh, really?
Yeah, that's 18.
Yeah, 19th to the 27th, eight days. So...
Perfect, thank you, thank you.
I saw that.
That's why I got you guys to double check. February 26.
It'd be February 26.
Okay.
There's eight days, they're how they work.
Perfect. We're all right with the back to back meetings in February then? Perfect.
Yeah, I think.
Any other concerns or...
Amber?
Not that I can see at this point.
Bob?
No, I'm good with all of it.
Great.
I'm also good.
Joe?
No problem.
James?
I'm good.
I'm good. Do we need a motion to approve this or with the change?
So you should approve these meeting dates as a commission and you should do it by resolution. So you just resolve to adopt these as your meeting dates. If you choose, then roll call vote.
Okay. I need a motion then.
Resolution.
A resolution.
Bob, you want to do it or I will?
You will.
I'll try it, how's that? I'll try it, Attorney Thaw. I think a resolution that we accept the planning commission dates for 2026 with the change of February 27th changing to February 26.
Support.
Is that good?
Perfect.
Okay.
Support.
Thank you.
We'll do a roll call. Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Sherwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Nowak?
Yes.
Commissioner Weintraub?
Yes.
Chair Nichols?
Yes.
Commissioner Kreitzer?
Yes.
Treasurer Bloomfield?
Yes.
Motion passes, seven ayes, zero nays.
Before we move on, you sent us an email with all the dates for this year. Is, there was one change on 10/16 where that started at 3:30.
Yes.
Which is going to be next week. Is there any other changes to that? Didn't we add another meeting to, another, or...
Yes, that'll be November 13th. I had to confirm with Emily Pets. I, the time for that, I had to confirm with that. It wouldn't be November though, so next meeting I can tell you all what day and time.
Okay.
It would most likely be November 13th. I think we said 5 to 6, but don't hold me to that. It's, I'll figure it out.
Okay, November 13th was the date that might change or will change. Okay, thank you.
Get off both ears, you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is updates from other boards, and I will say the zoning...
Citizen comment.
Huh?
We have citizen comment.
Oh, that's right.
It's gonna be huge.
Yeah. We're gonna open the citizen comment and what I read earlier still applies. So we are now in citizen comment. And since we have no citizen comment, we're gonna close citizen comment. Now.
I think you're safe doing that. I think, I think you're safe doing that.
Updates from other boards, the zoning commission hasn't met, so I have no updates there. Sandy?
We do have a couple of things that were happening on the township board. The township board picked a committee to start a work on homeless and panhandling. It was a committee of three that is going to interview more people to be on it with a board of seven. And two of them, I believe, were residents. Attorney Thaw, do you remember?
Four.
Four.
I thought, four.
Four.
Yeah, we get to four residents, wow. Okay. Wow, okay, because I thought we should have had somebody from the planning commission on there.
I would agree.
I didn't. Well...
You're residents.
We're all residents.
Yeah, so, well, anyway, I guess since we are all residents, if anybody wants to get on it, you need to apply and it's the same form you fill out to be on any of the other boards. The sirens, weather sirens, we did vote to put that into the budget, so we'll see where that ends up. So we should be getting sirens even if it's a phase in. And then the other thing that was a pretty hot topic was the policy to use the attorney. And we were told that this board was not affected by it because we have our own budget. So that was good news, but I would encourage all of you to pay attention to what happens with this. As right now, the way it is written, the only time we can contact the attorney is for our statutory duties. And I do not feel comfortable with that at all, whether I'm on the planning commission representing the residents or I'm on the township board, for when things come up that have nothing to do with my statutory duties on either board. But there has to be a fallback, and I think that when we are elected officials, we shouldn't have that stipulation, because I work for the people. I do not work for another elected official and I do not work for hired help. So I feel pretty strongly about that. So that was all I had for updates.
Okay. Thank you. The next item is training updates. Casey, you want to take that?
Yes, so we have had the people sign up for the MIP conference. I believe you all should have received a registration or just an email saying, "Thanks for registering." I reached out to MIP and they said that the people who receive the email should get more emails as we get closer to the date, along with an app to download that will show session rooms and all that fun stuff as we get closer. Other than that, no training updates besides the MAP conference.
Thank you. Our next item is information, future action items.
Yes, so I will go over the next few meetings. We're getting, it's been a lot lately. So October 16th, which is next Thursday, we have a 3:30 to 5:45 PM meeting with CIP and the moratorium committee, so joint meeting. CIP was assigned to go back and look at the feasibility of the overlay parcels and other parcels that would get away from the East Main parcel. They should be coming back to report that. And then following that meeting, we have a 6 PM regularly scheduled meeting. Currently, there's nothing on the agenda. We had no applications. There's not enough turnaround time to get minutes done or accessory structures or chicken ordinance done. So as of right now, we have a placeholder called Extended BEST Workshop. So if we work with CIP, decide we need more time, we can meet for a little bit, if not, call to order and adjourn. What else is there? On October 30th, we have the public hearing scheduled for the BEST ordinance. After October 16th, Attorney Thaw, me and Kyle will work on quickly getting the ordinance ready for public hearing and then we will present it then. And then we do have another meeting, another workshop with Emily Pets. That's what Joseph, Commissioner Weintraub was talking about. So I will get that date and time confirmed with her and then present it to you guys next Thursday.
Thank you.
Of course. Oh, and then there are two other things I would like to discuss.
Okay.
After last, during last meeting, we discussed the legal opinions with Attorney Thaw and we thought one thing couldn't figure out what we're talking about or what we were working on. So for the Soil Friends legal opinions, we asked Catherine to go back and look at the conditions and prepare and present to us whether or not we are in violation with the state law. Do we still, we still have Attorney Thaw to do that with the ones regarding the easement, regarding the wine making license? I don't know how you all feel about that, because there were conditions still. I believe we waived hours and then we waived...
My underst...
Oh, no, hours.
It was...
The loud music.
The music.
The loud music.
Amplified music. My understanding was that Attorney Thaw, you were gonna get with their attorney and just figure out what else they're trying to, what their other concerns are and then we can go from there if there's anything else we need to address.
Yes, there were two other issues. There was the easement, whether we could restrict easement.
Off of East Main.
Off of East Main, and what was the other one?
Was it if they make things other than wine or cider?
A different additional product or something like that. What I would request from you is, do their issues have merit? I mean, is there any reason that we should consider changing it? And if there is merit, you know, we don't want to go to court over it, that you don't...
Yeah, so it's kind of like what we did with the last, the last items, with the amplified music. If it has merit to it, then we're just gonna strike them, but we should do it by, in the records. We know that in the future, when you look back, we know what the actual conditions are. You know, but if it doesn't lack, if it lacks merit, then I would ask you to move forward and to strike those things at a future meeting.
Yes, please, that's what I would look for.
Bob?
I think if anybody wants to see the discussion on the meeting, I think it was the February 23rd meeting, when we sat down all the special use and everything else and stuff that we said, what they said, what they agreed to, what we agreed to, I think was all in the February of '23 meeting, so...
Yeah, really what I'm looking at, though, in particular are, based upon case law... He wasn't here when you read the letters. He's not privy to what we're discussing.
I got a pretty good idea, though.
No, the letter was pretty important. Yeah, so I mean, based upon more recent case law, there's, there's an analysis to review in terms of preemption by the state in their licensing over what our conditions might be. And that's why we struck those other conditions last meeting. And we'll just consider what else of those conditions would need to be addressed based upon preemption of state law. Now, if state law doesn't preempt it, then it's fine, but that's the analysis that we'll go into it. And if it's preempted, then I would come back and tell you what other areas of those conditions are preempted and ask you to strike them.
Thank you.
So on the noise with the amplified music and stuff, they still have to abide by the noise ordinances of, noise restrictions of the ordinances, right?
Yeah, that's any, anybody has to comply with police power noise ordinances.
Yeah, he can have it.
But we had restrictions in there that were...
Already we had restrictions, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I have one more question. So all of this brings up the, like, with the other pieces in the transition of Attorney Thaw and Attorney Kaufman, the, this is where you're gonna go, Casey? The legal opinions that we wrote, had Attorney Kaufman write, we haven't been able to address because of closed session versus open session situations. So I know at one point Attorney Kaufman had mentioned to us that if we wanted to ask her to separate the opinions so that we could then address them. But I do think we need, whatever we need to do, we probably need to take some sort of action so that all of that work was for not, for not, and we can resolve wherever those stand.
My question for Attorney Thaw would be, would you need to write your own legal opinions or can you go off of Attorney Kaufman?
No, it's fine, I can go off of Attorney Kaufman. We're in the same firm and I can, our opinions are the same opinions.
Okay.
Okay.
Can we get, we need a motion to separate them?
So, I mean, if, if, if you intend to go into closed session on some or vote on to go in closed session on some and others you don't intend to, you could separate them. I think were they all in one, one opinion? So, so I could separate them into four different opinions and we can go into closed session or at least vote to go into closed session on each one.
I think that would be appropriate so that we can...
Put it behind us?
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to...
I had hoped it was...
We need to settle this.
Yeah, I thought, I was, I was hoping it was behind us.
I have to ask you, if you would, what you hope to accomplish. I mean, we all read the opinions and, without, you know, I mean, it was fairly generic.
I can't talk about it because it's protected by attorney-client privilege, so I can't talk about it here in this open session.
I understand that.
Chair, permission to speak?
Go ahead.
As the treasurer for the township, I have asked not to go into closed session. So mine will not be going into closed session.
James, are you still in that?
I'm still in closed session also. I'm not going in closed session.
Okay, you don't want to go.
I'm staying out.
Okay.
All right.
We have two out.
So Bob?
I don't know where Bob's at with this.
How? What? I don't, I don't need to go into closed session?
No? Okay.
So I think we should make a motion.
I have not reviewed them, so...
A motion? A roll call vote, a motion?
A motion to have Attorney Thaw separate them into four different opinions?
If we're, if we're all staying out of closed session, we don't need that, do we, Attorney Kaufman?
Well, it's really something, so when you get, you would have to basically vote to waive the privilege and talk about it in open session. And you would do that when the, when it's before you. So you would have, say, if they're separated into four separate opinions, you could take opinion one and vote whether or not you want to go into closed session or waive attorney-client privilege on that and discuss it in open session. So, I mean, those would be taken...
So we have to do them individually?
Like preemptive, like saying, I don't ever, it's at the time when it's there before you, you vote to whether you're gonna go into closed session or not, or, and if, and if you're not going to, then whether you want to waive privilege and discuss it. And if you don't waive privilege and discuss it, then it's just not gonna get discussed.
So tonight, all we're doing is deciding whether you, to divide it up or not, right?
Correct. Yeah, it's not really before, before us on our agenda.
Right.
If, if, it's just more direction to me at the, whatever, at the next meeting or where...
And then maybe we could, maybe we could progress on it.
So, you know, maybe that's an item that comes back to the next meeting at 6 PM at the regular...
Yeah, I was wondering.
And we could just handle that.
Do we need a vote on that or...
I don't believe so, no.
Okay.
So the agenda is not, are not out yet. So ideally on Monday, then I would create a new agenda item for October 16th, that 6 PM meeting, Extended BEST Workshop and legal opinion, possible closed session for legal opinions written by Attorney Thaw.
Thank you. Next item is planning commissioner comments. Joe, you want to go first?
I'll go first and just say, I don't have much to add. Thought it was a good meeting.
Greg?
I thought also it was very productive again tonight. Thank you.
Bob?
It was good. All good.
Amber?
Uh, ditto.
Yeah, we're good.
James?
Very good meeting.
Sandy?
I do have something as usual, I'm sorry. No, I'm not sorry. I guess I want to, and I want this on the record, please. With the email I received from Soil Friends, from Sarah Martin, I guess I'm asking you, Attorney Thaw, when I have a resident who has an issue or has had issues, doesn't matter who it is in the township, but they email to my township email and they cannot get their issue solved through the proper channels that they've gone through before, so they email me and I share it with the zoning and I share it with this whole township board. So they all know what I have received as far as the email and what's in it. I don't think I shared that with you. I don't know if you were on at the time yet. It might have been Catherine, but I don't know if I did. I think I just did it with all the board and with you, Casey. I'm not sure if I even put... I'm not sure if I even put Scott Hess on there, I can't remember.
No, but I did receive it from the attorney prior to that.
Okay, okay, and when did you receive that?
Um, September, the day that I sent the email, so whenever that email was dated is when I received it, that night.
Okay, all right.
And then they voted, I had recused myself, and then...
Maybe that's why I didn't send it to you, Bob, was because I know you were in the lawsuit. So is that okay that I don't send it to him if he's not in the lawsuit? I don't know, Rob. I'm like confused, and I'm confused of why it was even somewhat thought of that it was ex parte, when I had no communication with somebody from Soil Friends with this. Do you see where I'm going? What, what are we supposed to do when we get a complaint, or something we need to handle?
I think what you did is appropriate, right?
Okay.
But we, so, as planning commissioners, people may come to you about things that may come before the board, before the commission. You have to be very careful in how you talk about those things, because you, you might want, you, everybody's first inclination is, yeah, I'm on the planning commission, I can help you, and, you know, that's just a normal inclination, right? But if it's a matter that's gonna come before us in the form of an application, that can be damaging to how we act on that application, because it can taint a decision, uh, having ex parte communications. So people could be referred to, you could say, okay, thank you for your comments, please, you know, and what you did is, you did send them out to everybody, you know, that's appropriate. But they can come to the planning commission at public comment time and make statements, they can come to administration, they can talk to Casey directly, they can always talk to staff about it, because the staff is a part of the decision-making body, and so those things can always go through staff. Um, but, uh, you just, again, you know, and it wasn't to, I, when I made the statement before, it's just a general statement, I don't, I didn't know what the specifics are of one thing or another, if you're telling me that you got this email, and then you emailed everybody out. It's just more a cautionary, uh, tale of how we have to, as commissioners, uh, react to when people approach us with information, uh, or discussion about items that may be coming before the planning commission. Because when you have an application, you sit as a quasi judicial body, and so when you're making decisions, the, the applicant and other aggrieved parties, or parties that are impacted, are due, due process, and a fair and unbiased decision-maker, and that can taint the decisions when you have ex parte communications. And I've had, I think we've had numerous cases over the years where things have gone on, and things have been approved, and then challenged, or things have been denied and challenged, based upon statements people make in, in public, on Facebook, thing, you know, you, you have to really be careful of that, as a commissioner. You know, you can say, well, it's my right to say these things, or it's my, you know, I have freedom of, you know, freedom of expression, you know, but as a commissioner, now, you sit as a judicial, quasi judicial panel, when you're making decisions on special land uses, and things of that sort, so...
So you need to recuse yourself on, like, if you say something on Facebook or any of those?
Definitely, because those things are prejudged, to say, then, then you're gonna get accused of prejudging something, and then if somebody wants to challenge that decision, then it automatically gives the door open to challenge that decision, and saying, oh, well, look at this Facebook site where they said they'll never approve something like that ever in their life. You know, now, when it comes before you, you better recuse yourself, because otherwise, it, it's just putting that decision up for a challenge. So that's, I just kinda putting those things out there for you to think about, you know, as people approach you on different issues that come before you. I, because your first inclination's always gonna be to help somebody out with a situation, right? You know, they come to you, you have knowledge, 'cause you know about the zoning ordinance and different things, but if it's a matter that's gonna come before, you really, it's fine, they can communicate to you, but then you need to communicate to them, they need to go through administration, they could come make public comments, you know, there's other ways to address the board in a open meeting, and other ways to do it, but you can't assist them, or, you know, really talk about how they should move forward on a subject matter outside of the open meeting or through administration.
I have another question. In the situation, uh, like that, that we were just discussing, uh, when we have a, a board member that can't participate, do we keep that board member informed of what's going on, or do we exclude that board member?
Well, I mean, they're informed by being at a meeting if they want to be, but you don't have, but it's, so if somebody is truly recused from a subject matter...
Yeah.
Should not even participate in the discussion of the matter. It's not just recusal from vote.
Right.
It's rescue, recusal from discussion.
I understand that, I was just questioning whether we should continue to send him the information that we get on it.
Uh, I don't think it would be, you know...
Appropriate?
I think it's probably fine not to.
Okay.
And then I...
Because they can't participate in that discussion, they, obviously, the things we do are all public things. Uh, when you take action, it's at a public meeting, an open meeting, so there's nothing that you, as a body, do that is not gonna be open to either if it's televised or to the public. So they will know what actions are taken.
I do have one more question for you. Um, what is your position on the planning commission members attending the township board meetings?
So, what you have to do, again, it's, it, some of it is perception, I, I believe that planning commissioners can't attend a board meeting, there's not, uh, it, it's different with board members attending, potentially attending planning commission meetings, because they have the voting authority over appointment, and you can have claims of undue influence sometimes, like if a supervisor's at a meeting, you know, they make, he makes the original, uh, appointment, and then the board confirms it, but, you know, they're back there saying, you can tell if they're angry about a decision you're making, that